Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Is it all testing?
He's waiting to start.
Okay. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Did I mute? Yeah, I gotta mute it. Do I have to switch or something?
We can hear you, John Day. John Day, we can hear you.
Maybe he can't hear us.
John Day.
Yes, sir.
He doesn't have his earphones in.
You got your earphone, Liam?
No.
You don't?
I need to have these in. Okay.
Now, can you hear us, John Day?
Testing, testing. I can hear y'all.
We can, we can hear you.
Okay, alright. If y'all can hear me, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, we are live on Facebook short. And we are live on Comcast. And we should be live on the city site now.
Good evening. Welcome to the City of Gallatin Council Committee Meeting, April fourteenth, twenty twenty six P M. Electronic meeting, per Governor Lee Executive Order Number sixteen and the need to limit the community spread of COVID nineteen. The April fourteenth, twenty twenty, Gallatin City Council Committee meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and citizen of Gallatin. Instruction for public participation in the meeting are available on our city website. This town would have a roll call. Ms. Ketchel?
Vice Mayor Camp? I'm not hearing Mr. Camp. Councilman Alexander?
Present.
Councilman Fan?
Here.
Councilman Fennell?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilwoman Love? You don't hear?
She's there.
I'm here. I lost my sound.
And Councilman Overton?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Ketchel. Before we can continue with this meeting, we need to have a roll call vote to have a meeting electronically. So at this time, Ms. Ketchel, will you have the vote?
Vice Mayor Camp? Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love? And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
We have, it is unanimous.
Thank you. So we are approved to have the meeting electronic. Now you have before you the approval of minutes for February the twenty fifth, twenty twenty, Council Committee Meeting, and also March the tenth, twenty twenty, Council.
Approve both.
Second.
Then a motion by Mr. Overton and second by Mr. Hayes. Are there any questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we'll have a public recognition. Anyone from the public that's online would like to have anything to say?
Okay, I'm going to the attendees, the phone caller that the phone number ends in two eight three. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Moving on, Andy Leith, your mic is hot. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'm here for item number three, so whenever that comes up, I'll be.
Very good. We've got a Pascal online.
I'm here. Good evening.
Okay, very good. Okay, that's everyone.
It's all a public recognition. Anyone else from the public wishes to speak this time, we'll call public recognition close. This time we'll have mayor's comment.
Thank you. I'll just give a brief update, just on the COVID nineteen situation currently in Sumner County today. Sumner County is reporting four hundred and sixty-two cases. There have been twenty-eight deaths in Sumner County. That represents about twenty-five percent of all the deaths in the state of Tennessee. So obviously, this has been a major focus of everyone the last few weeks. We are aware that at least nineteen of those twenty-eight deaths are from the Gallatin Center for Rehabilitation Healing. And as I have repeatedly asked you guys and I asked the public for your prayers for the friends and family of those who have passed from this virus and for those who are still suffering from it. It's certainly a difficult time, and I think our community is getting hit harder than any other in Sumner County. However, we're fortunate that we haven't had some of the weather activity that some of our neighbors have and certainly those neighbors in Hamilton County, and I think it's Bradley and maybe one other. They got a hard hit last night following up on what some of our close proximity neighbors suffered a few weeks ago. So we are fortunate in that regard, but we're really struggling with this virus right now. I did graph the, the cases recently, and it was showing that of lately, our day-to-day increase has been in the single digits, four percent, five percent, five percent, five percent. And I don't have the last three days broken into individual days, but I suspect that it's trending about the same based on the number that we're at today. So we hope that the curve is flattening. Of course, that means that people will see that curve flattening and ultimately starting to decline, and they may ease up on the precautions that they're taking, and so everyone needs to encourage everyone else not to do that. We really do have to be very vigilant in our attention to social distancing, only going out when we absolutely need to, taking the precautions that you've heard a thousand times. I won't go into all of that. Certainly, you're probably aware the governor did extend his orders through the end of April, so that will continue to impact our businesses. Signif- some of them quite significantly for the next few weeks, and I know that's a difficulty, and they're really gonna need our support when we kickstart this economy again and reopen for business here in Gallatin and of course, across the country. County Mayor Anthony Holt did extend his orders through April twenty-first. And just for your information, we are today extending our state of emergency for another week, and those other orders that have been extended will continue under this, as long as emergency exists. We did today distribute an updated pandemic plan. We had to include some families first language, and then we also included some guidance for people who are still working in facilities to continue to, to make extra efforts to limit face-to-face interaction, to use technology when they can, to practice good good precautions so that we don't spread the virus within the city. I want to say a huge thank you to our department heads and to our employees. It's a difficult time to work in, but everybody is really doing great. They're working hard, they're being positive, they're supporting one another. Most everyone is still working. We have a few people on leave. We've been fortunate that we've had some people in and out of quarantine. We have had a couple of positive cases within the city, but we've been managing everything as it comes along, and so far, everyone seems to be doing really well, and, and I really admire and respect that, and I think that you all do as well. And department heads certainly deserve a big shout out because they're leading the charge and dealing with people and, and their stresses and their fears. And, and so doing a lot more than managing departments these days, and I recognize that, and I know you do too, and that's a great thing. I think that is it. Thank you all for participating this way. I think we're getting the hang of it, so great.
Thank you, Mayor, for your comments. At this time, we'll go to our agenda. Item number one, Resolution Number R two oh oh four dash twenty, accepting public improvement by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee Fairway Farm, Phase Two, Section Seven, and Phase Three, Section One D. Mr. Tuttle, City Engineer.
Thank you, Councilman Alexander. We've got a resolution here for acceptance of public improvements that has been recommended unanimously by our planning commission. It includes a portion of Goodman Drive and Faster Drive.
Motion to approve.
Been a motion. I'm sorry. Been a motion by Mr. Overton and second by Mr. Hayes. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
Don't we have to have a roll call vote?
Just to have the meeting, I thought.
Okay.
What does the city attorney?
You need to have a roll call vote on each side and when it's electronically.
Okay, so each one of them, we had to have electronic vote? Okay.
Need to go back and approve the minutes?
Well, we did that on the minutes. We approved the minutes electronically. Now we're on item number one, so we need to do electronic vote by that also?
We need to roll call.
Roll call vote.
Okay. Item number one, motion been made by Mr. Overton and second by Mr. Hayes. We need electronic roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Camp? Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Fan?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
And Mr. Overton? Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you. Item number two? Resolution. Sorry, somebody say something? Okay, item number two, Resolution R two oh oh four twenty-one, accepting public improvement by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Foxon Phase Eight. Mr. Nick Turtle, City Engineer. Mr. Tuttle?
Sorry, thanks, Councilman Alexander. Yes, this is an item again for acceptance of improvements in Foxon subdivision. This is for a portion of bindings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been a motion by Mr. Overton, second by Ms. Love. All in favor, let's do electronic vote.
Vice Mayor Camp? Can't hear Mr. Camp.
I don't see him, not here.
I see him.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Fan?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
I did not hear Mr. Camp. I can't tell if he, what his vote was.
I see him there.
Mr. Camp, can you hear us? Shake your head, Mr. Camp, if you can hear us.
I think he didn't smoke signals.
Okay, I'm going with the yes on that, so unanimous vote.
Okay. Item number three? Y'all, y'all stop me when you see him.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you there now, Mr. Camp?
Well, can you see me?
Yes, we can see you, Will. We just.
See, I ain't got nothing on my computer. It put me, it sent me to to a post, post zoo meeting.
Hit the mute.
It wouldn't let me do anything, and now, right now, I'm just looking at my screen trying to log back in again.
Hit the mute.
Send you to the zoo. What do you say? Okay, okay. Oh, we're ready for, we're ready for item number three. Item number three, orders number oh two zero zero four dash fifteen, rezoning approximately zero point seven three plus to minus acre parcel from the A agricultural residential zoning district to the R fifteen residential zone district, located Eastern Highway one oh nine, in south of Oldham Bend Road, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflict orders for severability and providing for active date, Bill McCord.
Okay, council members, I just want to confirm that you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I, I heard that. I have a presentation, so I'm going to switch over to the screen while I do my presentation.
Bill, can I interrupt you one second?
Yes.
There, there's a lot of other noise coming through, so I would suggest not speaking while you're doing this presentation to mute their mics because there's some other weird noise coming in, and I know that's gonna be distracting for other.
Okay, I'll, I'll give everybody just a second so they can mute their mics. And when looks like most of you have muted your mics, so I'll begin. Okay, I'm moving to the share point. And, shit, share. Okay. There's a lag in this presentation. It takes a little bit of time. There we go. I think we have full screen now. This is a request to change the zoning on a point seven three acre parcel of land located on the south side of Odom's Bend Road and about a third of a mile east of Highway one oh nine, so it's essentially between Highway one oh nine, the section they just widened recently, and Flippers and the boat ramp out there, and it's on the south side of the road, so the property backs up to the lake. Again, it's point, only point seven three acres. It's not even one acre, and and this map will show you where it does, where that parcel is located. I think most of you are fairly familiar with this area. It does, again, back up to the old Hickory Lake Reservation. The property itself does not go down to the water line, though, and then it has frontage on Odom's Bend Road. This is an aerial photograph which outlines generally the location of the parcel. If you're familiar with some of the, the couple businesses off towards closer to the left side of your screen where that's roughly one oh nine, and you see the water there, which is Bull's Creek impoundment portion. And generally, what we're looking at is agricultural residential zoning all around this area, and they're asking to change the zoning to R fifteen. The area is designated as community, rural community in the comprehensive plan, and their request for zoning is to allow a fifteen thousand square foot lot, which is our fifteen zoning. Get currently, the agricultural residential zoning requires a two and a half acre lot, even though they only have a three-quarter acre lot now. So they have a non-conforming lot even under the existing zoning, and certainly it'd be considered inconsistent with the comp plan as well. The property doesn't have any central utilities to it. There's water lines up and down Oldham's Bend Road, but they're operated by Custidian Springs, Bethpage Custidian Springs system, and not the City of Gallatin system. The planning commission reviewed this request, and of course, we have electronic meeting as well, but we recorded a six to zero vote. Now, there were seven people present, and one of the members, we had communication problems with the electronic meeting, but it was a six, zero vote, both to not change the land use on it, which is not what you're considering tonight, but they also recommended not changing the zoning. Now, there may be an opportunity to reconsider that when, after we redo our comp plan, provided we have adequate policies in place that will address the ability to provide some sort of provision or provide for central utilities, and namely sewer is what we're concerned about. So the, again, the recommendation was unanimous by six, zero vote by the planning commission to not recommend zoning this property.
Bill, what do they want to do with that property?
They want to split it in two and create, I'm going back to my screen here, and create can you see me?
Yes.
Something, my screen went dark, but, so.
Linda, Linda, that sunny weather for his piece of property, our share, this is a piece of property that he inherited. He's trying to divide it up between his sister and his brother. He does not want to build there or anything like that. He's just trying to give them their own dedicated piece of property.
Yeah, and, and by doing so, of course, there's nothing that would keep them from selling a property once it was divided. So it, by changing the zoning, it would allow for creating an opportunity to create at least two fifteen thousand or more square foot lots. Problem is that there's no utilities to those properties, and it would be inconsistent with the comp plan as it's written right now. So that's why the planning commission recommended denial of that request.
So Bill, do you think we need to wait until we do the comp plan, our new comp plan? Is that what you're saying?
I would, and I would, while we're doing that comp plan, explore opportunities for development of the waterfront. One of the policies in the comp plan is that they discourage any development along the waterfront, which is, I don't know that that's really a good policy. It might be a good policy in certain areas, but it certainly hasn't been the practice of, of development in the city, and there's certainly properties in the city that are probably conducive to being developed in the waterfront, provided that there is adequate facilities available. So we need to address that and have a discussion about how we would like to see that happen.
When do you think this comp plan is gonna happen? Because I know, I know you and I have talked about like property on Nashville Pike, about putting that at the same time with the comp plan, so when is this comp plan gonna happen?
Yeah, we're kind of in hiatus right now because of this situation, coronavirus situation. So we, we're, we're at a critical point where we need to have some public meetings, and it's probably something as important as, and as large of a meeting that we would probably have. It's not conducive to doing it in this, this manner. So let's say if we get back on track in, in the end of May, we could have these meetings in June. It's obviously taken a couple of months or maybe three months out of this process. We thought that we might have something available by late summer, early fall to bring to you for at least workshopping, but it's probably gonna extend into at least around winter time.
So do we need to defer this at this time?
I've got a question, too.
Yeah, I've got one, too.
The, is Flippers and the building on the corner that Bobby Radius own, are they still zoned agriculture or are they zoned commercial?
Yeah, they're, they're agriculture, and there's some other large lot residential zonings down there. There's actually a special plan that was approved that includes the cement plant and the offloading port type facilities, and then there's another property next to it that has a large metal semi-industrial type building in it as well. But by and large, all the properties are completely surrounding this property in the immediate environs until you get up to Highway one oh nine or zoned agricultural residential.
Well, how, how, Bill, let me ask you a question. How is Flippers been able to use as a commercial building and the one on the corner as well, and these properties that we're talking about is right in between both of those? So how they've been able to use this as what they're using them for, and they're not in the proper zoning?
Well, they're pre-existing non-conforming uses, so they were established before the zoning code was created for that govern that area. Which brings up another issue is that the county is now considering, and I don't know when they'll get to it as well, they're considering a resolution to rescind the city's regional zoning authority. Now, being not in the city, this property is under city zoning, but it's not in the city. It's in the region, planning region, and the county may rescind the city's ability to administer zoning in that area. So it, it may be by the time the comp plan is adopted, unless they are willing to annex, that we won't have zoning authority, and they'll have to address that through the county.
But Bill, if we, if we, this is just a family piece of property. Their, their parents passed away, and they got a piece of property, and they're, they're wanting to get boat docks is what they're trying to do. They're not trying to build anything on it. Right, and until they get ready to build something on it, they're gonna have to get their sewer and water and everything else there. But, but they told me today that he has no plans whatsoever to build anything on this property. All they're trying to do is separate these lots because it's, it was a family deal. When their parents passed away, they give them these lots. So I, I, I understand what you're saying, but this is a very unique situation, and you got properties on both sides of them that's already, that's already using as commercial properties on both sides of these, of this piece of property, and so you're already, you know, this, this property is just stuck in the middle of them.
But this is not commercial property, and also, he could, he could go and sell this property tomorrow, once we rezone it, if they wanted to. Each one of them could.
It could also put up some.
What it's trying to do, but I, I still think that, you know, it might be better to wait till we go and do the comp plan, kind of like on some other property that we've got going on right now, too, to do it with comp plan to do that. But I guess my question is, is it not in the city? It's not in the city limits?
No, the city limits is located just, if you saw, let me get the is that is that map showing on your screen?
No.
No.
Okay. Let me get back to my screen, and I'll have to go back to share screen and select the map. How about now?
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Okay, yeah, so the dark line that's, the little box in the middle, of course, is the property, and the dark line to the west that's on the left side of the image is the city limit boundary.
Okay.
And, and that envelops Highway one oh nine and the properties at front on Highway one oh nine, or at least part of them.
I got you. I understand. Okay.
Bill, I'd like, Andy Leith, I think he's on here. I'd like to give him an opportunity to say something if he wants to. John Day.
That's, that's fine with me. No objection from any of the council members.
No objection?
Okay, where is it, Andy?
Yeah, there you go, Andy. I think that, you know, everyone's accurately stated the reason for the rezone request is basically so that they can subdivide that lot and divide it amongst the heirs. The heirs also own two other lots over there in the vicinity, the home place, which is on the north side of Odom's Bend, and there's a lot by right that they own on the south side, and then one of the sisters already has a lot over there. When we approached this project, we looked at the area, and it's already been noted that once you get outside the city limits, the first piece of land to the south of Odom's Bend is a commercial tract of land. Then you have four residential lots, all zoned agriculture, and then the next piece of land is Flippers. Just past that, there's a little subdivision that goes down to the lake. It's got some smaller lots on it. And we looked all around the area before we chose a, you know, a rezone or a zoning to ask for. And I understand the planning commission stance, and I appreciate planning commission making the decisions that they do based on what they're tasked with, what they were tasked with is the current zoning ordinance and the comp plan and things of that nature. But also realize that not everything fits the, the mold that we always have right in front of us, and this is one of those that planning commission did their job, but this is why we have this appeal process to the council to explain a different way of looking at this. I, I personally don't feel like the R fifteen is a, is a request that will not work with whatever future comp plan the city comes up with, unless they decide to make that whole area commercial along through there.
If the council's inclined to approve this R fifteen zoning, expect everyone else along there to come in and ask for the same thing. Again, we have no central sewer here at this time, so.
And I mean, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I, I don't feel like R fifteen's a bad request. You've got what appears to be R twenty or R four just across the body of water off of Watch Lane and Wayward Point. Now, I can't tell my colors on the map. It looks like, and Bill can correct me, but it looks like it's R fifteen. If not, it's R twenty. And some of the lights are scaling smaller than twenty thousand square feet, so.
Yeah, but they have central sewer.
And we've already talked to the public utility department and then talked to Mr. Weatherford and the family is willing to put up a bond sewer is is close. It depends on what you figure what you think close is, but it's not. It's not out of the question to get sewer to this property should someone really want it there.
Andy, hey, this Craig, what's it, what's his big, what's his big hurry on doing this instead of waiting till the comp plan is done?
Well, to say that he's in a big hurry, Councilman, we've probably been working on this for eight months.
Okay.
So, you know, I I don't know from their perspective, to be honest with you. Other than, you know, he could probably tell you that he's been waiting on me for a really long time already.
Yeah, I mean, because this is the first we've heard of it. So I mean, I don't know. I just wonder what his big hurry is.
I I don't think that they're they have a big hurry per se, other than the inheritance has been divvied out to him for some time now and they're just trying to get it.
Bill, I've got a question.
We, yes, ma'am.
If this is not in the city limits, why is it our decision?
Well, it's in the planning region and in certain areas surrounding the city, the city has zoning authority and it's called the planning region. So there's a particularly in this part of the town. All the way out to the TVA plant, all of that property and all up and down Steam Plant Road is in the planning region. So there's a few other places on the north side of town that we also have extraterritorial, extraterritorial zoning authority. And this just happens to be one of those.
I personally don't have a problem with it at this time. That's just my personal opinion.
Me either.
What's the will of the body? Somebody say something, do something, make a motion or something.
Thank you all to hear what Mr. Gregory has to say about getting sewer.
Okay, Mr. Gregory. Hit your mute button. Your mic is still muted. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
It'd take about a million dollars worth of sewer to get there. Two houses, I don't see it.
Who's going to pay for that?
Yeah, us. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They're they're not going to build any houses there. That's what I'm saying. They don't have any re- any reason to build a house there. They're just wanting for the lake property and the family own the property and they're just wanting to get boat docks there and they don't want any, they don't want any sewer there. They don't electricity there.
I don't. What if they go and sell it though?
Right, but what if, what if the heirs, if the three people want to sell?
I've got a question. I've got a question.
Yeah.
Couldn't they just put on the plat? It can't be built on because there's no sanitary sewer or get it approved by the county? To put a septic system in of some type.
There you go. Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve with that stipulation.
I'll make a motion. We defer until they try.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We got one at a time. Now let's.
Craig, what was your motion?
I just say I make a motion that we defer it and let them see if they want to do that.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
So do I hear this?
Andy. What are we wanting to try? What do you want me to try here? Is it, is it the septic system or?
Craig, I I withdraw mine. Craig just saying that we make a motion to hear from the the landlord if he's okay with the motion that Craig presented.
Yes, the motion to see if they want to do a septic system. Yeah.
But but if they don't need a septic.
I thought you put, I thought you said do a stipulation on the land, Greg, that they could not build any houses there.
No, yes, yeah. What, David, where's David? Gregory?
I'm I'm here. I said, I just said, put on the plat that they can't build houses on those lots unless it's, you know, there's a septic system that has been approved.
Correct, yes.
Alright, yes, that sounds good.
That way, if anybody buys lots, it'd have that on there.
If we approve it, Mr. Gregory, on those conditions, then they could do the dark. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, it looks to me like if they sold the lots with a stipulation on that, that there's no sewer available and that, you know, there's no, they need to check on whether it could be a sewer system put in, septic system of some type. But just put note on the the plat.
That's what I made a motion to defer to to see if that's what they would like to do, you know, and then we could bring it back up again to see.
I'm fine with that too, Craig.
Okay, there's been a motion to defer. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Been a second by Miss Love? Any question?
And we'll let, yeah, I'm, I was going to say, Andy, if you don't mind, just get with them and and kind of go from there and see what they say about that.
Okay, we'll find out from.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to defer. We'll vote by electronic, Mrs. Ketchel.
Defer for how long?
Just till whenever Andy gets back with them, just till when he wants to get back with us, you know.
Go ahead and put me on the next work session.
Okay.
All right, now we're voting on the defer order.
Vice Mayor Camp? No vote. Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Fann?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Miss Love?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yeah.
We have six yeses and one no vote. I mean, not a person not voting.
Okay, well, his his mic is mute. Okay. Motion carried to defer. Item number four.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, John D., may I say something else?
Yes, please.
Andy, if you're still there, will you say something to the sheriff if he's okay and waiting to our comp plan comes out also?
Uh, yes, I'll find out and and will I be accurate in saying that could be six to twelve months?
It could be three years. You don't know how long it's going to be.
Oh, wow. Oh, okay.
Better not be three years.
Who knows?
It's not going to be three years.
Okay, are we finished with item number three? We're moving right on to item number four. Report from state retirement system. Ms. Rachel Nichols, financial director.
In your packet, there's a report from the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. This is a report on the portion of our hybrid retirement plan that is the pension part. The city contributes four percent to this. The employees contribute five percent. This is our first actuarial evaluation of our plan since we joined. This just tells us that of our four percent that we, the city puts up for the employees, one point seven one percent will be going to the actual employee accounts. And the remaining balance of two point two nine percent goes into a stabilization reserve. And that reserve is built into the plan to take care of conditions like we're in right now, when the market fluctuates greatly, when the earnings aren't quite what we planned for. That's somewhat of a rainy day fund for this program. There's no motion or no activity needed from the council. It's just a report for your information. But I'll be glad to answer any questions if anyone has any.
I I have a question. I've asked it years and years. Why don't the city council? Why are we not approved for this?
There's a minimum number of hours required for an employee to work and be counted as qualified to participate in the system. Believe that's been the reasoning.
So you have to have X number of hours before you can be considered as an employee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else on the retirement system? Anyone in the council members? If not, we go to item number five, continued discussion of proposed orders number zero one nine oh nine dash forty six. Establishment of the Big Station Camp Boulevard Transportation Improvement District. Mr. Bill McCoy, city planner, and Mr. Nick Tuttle, city engineer. And both of y'all speak at the same time.
Commissioners, I'm going to allow Nick to do the introduction and description of the changes that have been made. Most of them have been made in in his house, so. Nick, it's all yours.
Thanks. This is Nick, city engineer. I just, I know I had emailed you all just a small synopsis of what we changed. Really, I think the only thing worth discussing. Change is something that is in favor of the development community and is something that the city of Gallatin will have to really make up the monetary difference on. And I know Mr. McCord certainly didn't want to concede on this point. But the point was to, instead of using a two thousand and fifteen estimate as what today's dollars are. Instead of doing that, what we had in the ordinance was was to actually go ahead and have the the index applied so that we were already making up the difference on the estimate that we had that was four years old. So what we've done is we've, we've agreed to to allow the development community to continue to work under the same numbers that they've seen for the last few years. Those are the numbers that they've been working with and estimating on or expecting when they entered an agreement with us. And so that's the concern that that you heard and what I think the 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 will of the council from the last meeting that you all would like for us to change that. So that was the major change that was made. And I think all the other changes were pretty minor. As a matter of fact, I don't, I don't know that we even have any of the representatives for the the landowners or the development community on the line tonight. I did talk to a lot of them prior to the meeting and the the position or the the statement that they made to me was that they they were happy with with what we have come up with and didn't feel like it was necessary for them to join in the meeting tonight.
I got a question. Susan, you feel comfortable that the college and you've come up with the agreed terms on this? Susan McCollum?
Yes, yes. That was in the last draft we brought to you a few weeks ago that had been resolved.
Okay. I make a motion, send it on the council for approval.
Second it.
So this discussion, okay, are we? We can vote on it?
Nick, you ready for us to vote on it, right? To finalize this?
Yes, sir. I'm recommending to move it forward. I think that we have talked about this enough. And I believe that we've gotten to a point where not everybody's happy. And I think that's where you you end up when you're trying to create something like this.
Okay, motion been made by Mr. Overton to send it on to council. Do I hear a second?
I already seconded it.
Oh, Miss Love's seconding? Any question? All in favor, let it be known by electronic vote, Miss Ketchel.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Miss Love?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Fann?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Camp?
His mic is mute.
No voting on that, but we do have a vote of six to one, six to none.
All right, we'll send it on the council then.
Okay.
Item number six. Governor local government support grant, Mayor Paige Brown.
Um, thank you, Councilman Alexander. If it's okay with you, I'm going to kind of talk about item six and seven together because they're really advisory for both of you. I mean, both those items are advisory for all of the council. I am planning to present a budget to you guys at the next work session, but I kind of wanted to share with you the direction that we are going so that A, you're not surprised and B, you let me know if you're in major disagreement before we go go that direction. So what now, right now, what we're looking at is about a four million dollar reduction in our revenues being projected, which is going to cause a larger than ten percent budget cut from last year's budget. To retain our employees that we have, that's going to mean cutting expenses across the board, existing expenses. Taking out all capital requests for this year. And I think that will get us fairly close to meeting the that that number we need to meet to balance our expenses with our revenues. I am going to propose that we use some portion of our reserve funds to fund some 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 capital that I would consider in the high needs area. And those would be things like public safety and roads. Which brings me to what is actually item six, which is the governor's local government support grant. If you've been following the legislature and what they did with the budget this year, especially with the onset of COVID, originally they were going to distribute a portion of some reserve funds to all the cities and all the counties. Well, they essentially doubled that number. What that number looks like for Gallatin now is nine hundred and twenty two thousand dollars that we can apply for and should receive. It has requirements around it that either has to be COVID relief related or investments in IT, public safety, roads. I think that's it. I think that's it. So my plan is, is to use that nine hundred and twenty two thousand dollars and some reserve to fund some of our extreme, extreme needs and capital and to just bring a very, very lean budget to you. I think that if we get to, say, September or October of this year and we're seeing our unemployment numbers go back down and we're getting those sales tax reports from, say, March, April, May, June, and they look okay, then I think we can amend the budget and and make some changes that give people a little bit more spending ability. But I really think that this is the right way to proceed at this time. And certainly I'm open to any of your input. But that's kind of where we are now. So I can answer any questions or or listen to any suggestions or ideas you might have.
I just, I feel personally uncomfortable taking any money out of reserve unless it's a major issue or something.
So they'll be, without you, this is not rainy day funds. This is our additional reserve, okay? We would maintain our rainy day fund. It would be our additional reserve. We would take it, be taking money for it. Every year we do use a little bit of our reserve because that reserve kind of rolls year to year. And we tend to use a little bit of reserve for some capital investment. But I wouldn't deplete the extra reserve and it wouldn't touch our rainy day funds. But without that, we're not going to be able to get some essential things.
How much do we have in our reserve?
Rachel, do you have a rough number on reserve funds right now? Unencumbered reserve?
Rough number is about twelve, thirteen million. And our rainy day fund makes up a little over seven and a half million of that number.
So the rainy day and the reserve are totaled together in this? Are they correct?
Or are they just separate?
So it's four and a half extra reserve essentially.
Again, please.
Four and a half approximately additional reserve beyond the.
Rainy day.
Seven and a half rainy day.
Rachel?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing? We have seven and and a half in our rainy day fund? And four and a half in the reserve?
Four and a half to five and a half. It's closer to thirteen million total. And the rainy day fund is seven and a half of the thirteen, so that would leave five and a half. That is
Reserve.
Just reserve. Free to be used for anything more wisely spent on one-time purchases than recurring purchases.
Paige, you going to give it to her next work session? Is that when you going to give us the budget?
That's my plan.
Yeah.
What's the will of the body?
No, I think it sounds good, what she said. So we need to move it on.
Let me know here or later if you think it's, if that's the wrong direction, but I.
I think it's the right direction. I really do.
I think we're better off being very conservative on the front end than getting into the middle of the year and going, oh, no, we've way overestimated. What do we do? So I'd rather go into the year really cut and and have some ability to add if things are better than we fear.
I don't have an issue.
Or as good as we hope. I'll put that five, six spin on it.
I don't have an issue with the the reserve, but I do have a issue with the rainy day. I wouldn't want us to get into that seven and a half. No, no circumstances.
Yeah.
That's just me.
You guys would have to vote on that specifically if we were to do that, and I have no intention of doing that.
Well, each expenditure have to be a.
Will each expenditure have to be approved?
What do you mean?
By the council.
No, once we give the green light to spend up to five and a half rainy days, it's mere discretion. Is that correct?
We're not, we're, five and a half is not the rainy day. The budget would be.
I know. I'm not talking about rainy day. I'm talking about reserve.
Yeah, budget is gonna be just like I presented every year and I will show you what portion of those funds are gonna come from reserve. You would pass the budget that would allocate those reserve dollars along with revenue, so.
It's like we always do.
First time I've been approached with, I mean, I'm the, uh, freshman in here.
Okay, yeah, wh- what's the will? I've already expressed my idea, so.
I think it's just for discussion. I don't think we're gonna vote on anything. I think it's just discussions all it is.
I thought the mayor asked for a vote.
Yeah, maybe I need to clarify a little bit Mr. Fann's question, but basically, um, once the budget's approved, everything that is in that budget is then. Available to be spent without the council voting on those items individually throughout the year.
Right.
Um, the things that we vote on throughout the year individually are typically amendments that are either. Numbers that have gone beyond the budget request or new things that haven't been, um, in the original budget.
It'd be at your discretion, Craig.
What now?
Would it be at your discretion if those monies are spent?
No, once they're approved in the budget, it's, it's, we've all, you all have approved it. I don't get to vote on it. You do.
No, no, I know. If, if it's approved in the budget, who determines how much is spent on what?
I think he's talking about the reserve money.
Right.
I think you confused them a lot, Paige, when you guys talked about the reserve money.
Okay, okay. Um, let me, let me try it this way. Say we have thirty-four million dollars in revenue projected. And we're going to present a budget and I, I, this, I don't know the exact numbers yet. This is sort of close. Um, we present a budget that's thirty-six million dollars. That means that two million dollars would have to come from our reserve funds to fund the twenty twenty-one budget.
Okay, it's just fund, uh, different funds for the budget.
It's, it's to fund the budget. It's not, um, the, but, but the reason I'm, I'm speaking separate about funding capital. With the reserve funds is because the state does want us to balance our revenue with our operating expenses. If you're not doing that, you're not presenting a very solid, um, budget. You should not be, like Rachel just said earlier, you should not be using reserve funds for recurring expenses. And so that's why it's very important that we get our operating expenses down there with our revenue stream and don't count that reserve funds as part of our revenue stream. Does that help?
It does.
Okay. What's the will of the body again?
I, I think we're just letting Paige present it to us next, um, work session.
Okay, so we, uh, we have nothing to vote on at this time? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
Really, I just want y'all's feedback and want to just give you a heads up where we're going, so, um, you wouldn't stop when we got there.
I think it's fine.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with the reserve, but again, uh, you know, I can't say it enough. I, I do have a problem when it comes to the rainy day fund, but, okay. Anything else on the budget or the grant? If not, we'll go to other business. Any other business from any of the council members? Mayor council members, any, any other business, anybody on this panel? If not, what about department heads? Any department heads? Do you have any? Comments, any issues, anything you want to ask, discuss? For the budget gets going? Speak now if you ever hold your peace, because you could be holding it, look like. Going once, going twice, you know. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
The motion. The second of Miss Love, we are officially, do we have to vote on it? Ms. Ketchel, do we have to vote to adjourn?
Uh, that would be, uh, uh, Susan's question, I think. We did not the last meeting.
I think you're okay. This is a work session. I think we're fine.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Stay, stay safe, everybody and healthy.
I'll be careful.
And stay off the computer.
Good job, John D.